Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Rutherford County School Board meeting for October 22nd. First call of business is our pledge of allegiance.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, united all, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Tonight, for a moment of silence, I'd like to recognize Bill Estes, long-term bus contractor for us, and then Ms. Susan Keener, part of our Walter Hill family out there. Let's keep their family in our prayers. So if you would please join me in a moment of silence. All right. Thank you. All right. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Estes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Second? All right. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Number six will be our visitors. We have a couple of visitors tonight. First up, we have Mr. Pettis Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Hello, Mr.
And board members, and Mr. Superintendent. It's good to stand before you this evening. I've never had this opportunity, and I'm glad to be here with you this evening. While I'm here this evening, I'm representing the trustees of the Sam Davis Home Board in Smyrna. I believe you had a couple of months ago, an individual to come before you, a concerned citizen, concerned about a project that we're trying to have at the Sam Davis Home that results in the removal of a low-water dam that's near not only our property, but your property. That's between those. And we've been involved in this project since 2015, as we have seen the necessity of removing this dam. This dam is showing a lot of wear. It's been there since 1939. It was placed there for a reflection pool. The ladies, they were doing flowers and things around there as a way to back up water for a reflection pool. But over the years, it's taken a lot of wear and tear. And I'm going to ask at this time if it'd be okay for Mr. Murphy out here, who's president of our Board of Directors for the Sam Davis Home, to pass out a memorandum of understanding that we're working on that's between not only us, that will also be with the school board, and with the Cumberland River Compact, who is working on this project with us. And it explains in there, we think is a good process, that we will be able to work this out, where it'll be something that will be workable between not only us, but with you, and with the Cumberland River process. Over the last few months, there were supposed to be hearings before the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, and that role has, that process has been taken care of. It's been dismissed. We do know there are two more individuals that we have to look at for as satisfying, and that is you, and there's also the Tennessee Historical Commission. They are taking a reinvestigation of it to look at the dam to see if it is historically necessary to remain there or whatever. The thing is that we know is that we have had TDEC. We have also had the Corps of Engineers involved in this, and they are saying that the dam is so much damaged that it needs to go. And if you'll look at the end of the dam, which is next to your property, it has been breached. In fact, a person can walk between the dam and your property when water is down. So that tells you that during a flood or a lot of high water, that kayakers or anybody that happens to be on that could actually get their boats hung or whatever. In fact, we had that happen back in July. Luckily, no one was injured. No one was hurt. But what's involved in this is a mitigation of credits and environmental credits, which is too long to explain here tonight. But we did want to get you this MOU, so you could be looking at it and going over it with your attorney. We have spoke with your attorney over this situation. Appreciate the time tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Can we pass these out to you?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next visitor, Michael Harris.
Michael Harris, 5235 Sledge Road. Go on over by now. Back to the Tan Oaks Project. I always ask every meeting, what's the hurry? And everybody says it's not a hurry. It's just got to be open by August of 2021. Well, we've had environmental issues that have been bypassed to get the job done and opened on time for August of '21. Yesterday, we had life flight come out because corners have been cut. We had a man get buried in a trench when a trench caved in. 5:20 yesterday afternoon. Thank God there was some coworkers there that could dig the man out. Today, they bring in a trench box. Now, safety, I don't care if you want the school open or not. It's going to open, but is it going to cost somebody their life? Is it worth somebody's life to shortcut, Mr. Lee? Is it worth that? My neighbor, back to Mr. Lee, my neighbor, I know y'all are going to vote tonight on the sewer line to give Mr. Reed and Mr. Lee authorization to proceed with eminent domain on the people that need to be, the sewer line go across their land. Unfortunately, one of the, there's four people that it's got to cross. Two have not been contacted. Two months ago, Mr. Lee told this board that he was going to be contacting them this week. You can go back and look. It was the September 3rd minute. Going to contact them. The man, my neighbor, he has COVID. He tried to get me to speak for his three minutes tonight. Y'all won't allow it. Mr. Reed won't allow it. I said, well, can we put him on speakerphone? Nope, not allowed. Got to be here in person. But yet, the man has COVID. He cannot be here. County commission meetings, we have commissioners come in on a Zoom call. Why isn't that allowed here? Now, you're going to vote tonight to take this man's property, and he's never been notified about it. Two months ago, Mr. Lee said he was going to do it. Never contacted the man at all. Now, you're going to condemn his property. It's just ridiculous of what this school board is allowing to happen in Rutherford County.
Next visitor, Beth Priest.
Hello, Mr. Spurlock and board members. I come tonight to speak for our Rutherford County school teachers and as a future teacher, myself. Last week, my community of Walter Hill lost a special education teacher, Susan Keener, to COVID-19. She contracted the virus shortly after the school year began, and she, like many teachers, every day put her students' academic success before herself. Our teachers walk into the school building every day, understanding the risks, and they go in anyway. I've emailed Mr. Spurlock and the board to ask that we continue to keep the mask mandate in place to protect our children, our teachers, and our support staff. I have heard back from four of the board members that are present here tonight, saying that they will continue to support the mask mandate in schools. I ask from those of you that I've yet to hear back from, that you will take the following into consideration. Rutherford County has 11,165 confirmed cases, 849 active cases. The CDC states that adherence to wearing a mask can reduce infections by 80%. 40% of people infected with the virus have no symptoms. Governor Lee himself stated this week that masks remain one of the most effective, widely available tools we have to keep us safe here in Tennessee, and asked us to make the responsible choice to choose to wear a mask. While the Tennessee Board of Education only recommends masks, we must look to Article 2 of the Tennessee Teachers' Bill of Rights. Every teacher must be allowed to work in a safe environment, free from fear that a student, or parent, or any person may enter with the intent of causing bodily harm. If the CDC and our governor says that masks keep us safe from a deadly virus, then our teachers have a right to that safety. We must continue to protect our students and teachers from COVID-19 by continuing to enforce masks in our schools. I don't think we can lose one more teacher. And I think you guys will agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Priest. All right. Number seven, Mr. Burlock.
All right. Number seven, this is Rutherford County Virtual School mascot. Rutherford County Virtual School is proposing to adopt the school's mascot as the Rutherford County Virtual School Trailblazers. School would like to put this mascot suggestion up for a board vote. This submission was proposed by 11th grader Brendan Hart after all the students were asked for input. The school committee voted and decided that the Trailblazers would represent the school well. Brendan's suggestion included the following passage: "I think we should be Trailblazers. Rutherford County Virtual School is on the hunt for a greater expedition in trailblazing new opportunities for a next generation. The Rutherford County Virtual School Trailblazers will help make the world a bigger and better place to be. I believe the future generations of Rutherford County Virtual School students will help grow the school and push the limits of what we are capable of doing. Motion to approve the adoption of Rutherford County Virtual School Trailblazers as the mascot for the Rutherford County Virtual School."
Do I have a motion?
I can make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Do I have a second? Ms. Moore? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number eight.
All right. Number eight is the reopening and problematic support grant. Rutherford County Schools has been approved, $125,000 with the LEA reopening and program, problematic support grant. These funds are tied to the Continuous Learning Plan submitted to the Tennessee State Department of Education on July of 2020. The Instruction Department is requesting the purchase of additional 508 devices. These devices will be initially funded by Rutherford County Schools by December the 1st, 2020. Then they'll be reimbursed with this grant allocation. How many devices did we have come in this week, Mr. Lee?
2,500.
2,500. So this is going to help us some. Motion to approve purchase of 508 student devices not to exceed $125,000 by the Rutherford County Schools to be reimbursed by the LEA reopening and problematic support grant.
Any discussion? All right. Motion to approve?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Second. Mr. Estes. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine.
All right. Number nine is another grant. This is federal Department of Justice Community-Oriented Policing Service Grant, found on Tab 2. Rutherford County School Safety Director has applied for the federal DOJ COPS grant of $225,001 over a three-year period. The grant will provide funding to improve security at Rutherford County Schools and on the school grounds through the purchase of APX trunking handheld radios to be used by the school's crisis response team at each school. These radios will greatly improve response times for our schools in the event of an emergency, as the radios will be on the same channels as the county emergency services. This grant has a local match of $25,000 per year for three years. Now, Mr. Bodger, you and I discussed this a little bit. There is a possibility of us getting reimbursed for what the county's purchasing. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. The county, on the county side, they purchased quite a few radios with a bond issue, as part of a bond issue, and I've been coordinating with the county county director. So we'll find out from the grant folks if we can utilize that as local match.
All right. So this is a commitment for $25,000 for three years. Motion to approve the federal DOJ COPS grant as presented with local match to come from either local tax revenue, or if approved by the state, in the annual safe school grant fund appropriation.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion? Ms. Breton?
I so move.
Second? Ms. Sharp? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 10.
Number 10 is Stewart Creek High and Eagleville sponsorship with MTSU agreement, found on Tab 3. MTSU and Stewart Creek High and Eagleville are requesting the board approve partnerships in which MTSU advertising banners will be placed over the entrances to football stadiums and in the Eagleville cafeteria. In exchange, MTSU will pay Stewart's Creek High and Eagleville High, or Eagleville School $5,000 per year. MTSU has a similar agreements with Oakland High School and Segal High School, and they're working with the other schools as well to bring about agreements. The current proposed agreement is for five years. However, legal has requested the agreement be changed to four years to stay within the confines of the board's authority to independently approve this agreement. All other contract language will remain the same. Motion to approve Stewart Creek High and Eagleville with the MTSU sponsorship agreement up to four years.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
How quickly do they think that they will get, because this is half of our schools, but it leaves out Smyrna, Laverne, Riverdale, and Blackman. How quickly do you, it just says they're in working to work out a agreement.
I'd say pretty quickly. I mean, I think that's a good point you bring up, because they did Segal and Oakland. It's been at least two years. Am I correct on that? Maybe three? So, yeah, that's a conversation we would need to have with them to make sure that we got everyone in.
It's in fairness to all. I mean,
Absolutely.
That's a generous, that's a generous gift, but they all can.
Yeah, I would agree.
Any other discussion? All right. Do I have a motion?
I move. We accept.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell.
Okay.
Mr. Estes, second. All in favor, say aye? Second? I'm sorry. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 11.
All right. Number 11 is the Red Bird Flight Simulation Incorporated Support Service Agreement. This is renewal of the Support Service Agreement for the Red Bird Flight Simulator at Segal High School. The first year was included in the cost of the simulator, and the second year and subsequent years will be paid through the General Purpose CTE Funds. Billing is charged based on Support Service, HOB hours. Service hours not to exceed 300 at $7.50 each for the 2020-2021 school year. If additional hours are required, further board approval will be necessary. Motion to approve the service agreement with Red Bird Flight Simulations.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask, just, I'm fully approve of this, but can we get a picture of this for those of us who haven't toured yet?
How about a tour, maybe?
Yeah, we would love to have a tour, but I know that there are some new members on the board that haven't seen it, and this is a fantastic piece of equipment.
I agree.
They've done a great job with this.
How about I'll reach out to you guys, done tomorrow with some dates?
Yeah, we'd love to.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Estes and Ms. Sharp, second. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 12, Mr. Burlock.
All right. Number 12 is curriculum instruction, found on Tab 5. Before I get into this right here, and we'll talk a little bit about this later on, about ready to graduate and early post-secondary opportunities. In our early post-secondary opportunities in high school, we have certifications in our CTE. In 2018, we had 318 certifications that were acquired. In 2019, in a COVID-abbreviated school year, we had 737 certifications. Had we carried that out, projected that out, we'd be well over 1,000 for that. That's an outstanding job for your career in technical education program, you and Mr. Lewis and all your teachers. Outstanding job. All right. The Curriculum Instruction CTE Department would like to allocate approximately $15,000 of Perkins 2020-2021 funds to support the career and technical education curriculum team leads for our high school CTE career clusters. The purpose of this CTE curriculum team lead would be to help develop the instructional capacity of teachers, industry partners, and students within our county. The leads would be responsible for conduction in person and virtual meetings for the career clusters, PLCs, and the advisory council meetings. These allocations are, each participant receives $500 stipend for conducting professional development sessions and advisory council meetings through the PLC framework by the CTE career cluster. Motion to approve allocating $15,000 of Perkins funds to support the career and technical education curriculum team leads for our high school CTE career clusters. Each participant will receive $500 stipend for conducting professional development sessions through the PLC framework by the career and technical education career clusters across the district to support teacher and student success. And you have a list of the clusters, the ambassador, and where they teach.
Any discussion? Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Do I have a second? Ms. Maxwell. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 13.
All right. Number 13 is facilities. I think we discussed this back in the spring, if I'm not mistaken. It all runs together, if I'm not mistaken, about going out for requests for qualifications as we were looking at energy savings companies. This is what's being requested here. The Engineering and Construction Department has provided the board and the county commission detailed deferred maintenance cost data for the past two years. During this time, the age of our facilities has continued to increase. The cost has also increased, and we grow closer to having major failure. With no funding being approved, we would like to issue an RFQ for energy management services to utilize the cost savings to potentially pay for a large portion of the maintenance cost. We believe there is a cost savings in converting our present lighting to LED and thereby utilizing the savings to pay the maintenance. Once the RFQ firm is selected, we will provide information for the board to approve moving forward. This RFQ process, it at no cost to the board. Motion to approve issuing the RFQ for energy management services.
Any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lee, what would be the timeframe for this?
This is October. I would think we would be ready to go out by latter part of December to send our RFQ out. Typically, that's a four-week process. So I would think probably by the first week, by the end of January, 1st of February, we would be ready to come back to you guys with a proposal.
Thank you.
Also, we had someone come and speak about this before, correct? So they will be offered an RFQ, no?
The RFQ will be at, the company that came before is one of four or five different companies that perform the same service. They would be one of the companies that would definitely submit a proposal. We'll also get three to five other proposals, and we'll review all of those proposals. Then based on that, we will come back with a recommendation out of those five, which one we would like to move forward with.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was the same.
Yes, ma'am. Same thing.
Train, I believe it was. Train?
I'm sorry.
Train?
Yes. That's one of the companies, yes.
I do have a question. Mr. Lee, what is the process for issuing an RFQ like that? I mean, do we do it publicly, like on our website, or is it called as a?
Yes. It's just like, it's like sending out a standard bid. It's just that there'll be, it's more for qualification. Gives us a little more, it's like when we did the substitute teacher RFQs, kind of a similar process.
So it's published though publicly? So any organization or company that does that type of work would have the opportunity?
Yes, ma'am. It's a public bid.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Estes. Do I have a second? Who is that? Ms. Moore? Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Part two.
All right. Part two is the Tan Oaks Naming Committee Meeting. The committee, the committee to select the name, colors, and the mascot for Tan Oaks School Site. And on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, it was determined that all schools on the campus would be called Plainview. The colors will be the USC Pantone 201C, Cardinal Pantone 123C Gold. The mascot for the elementary school will be the Otters. The administration for the middle and high school will select a wild animal for mascots that is not currently being used by the Rutherford County Schools. Motion to approve Plainview Elementary, the name, Pantone 201C and 123C as official colors for all schools on the site, and allowing the future administration to select mascot with it being a wild animal that's not being, that is not currently being used in the Rutherford County school system.
All right. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Sloan Mode, Donald Jernigan, Lisa Moore, board member, and Mr. Trey Lee for being part of this committee and making this decision. All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Second, but Ms. Maxwell. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Part three.
Part three, the Tan Oaks Sewer Easements. It's necessary to run sewer line to the Tan Oaks site to provide sewer service for the property. Under the City of Murfreesboro guidelines, the sewer can be, only be extended for the use by schools. Adjoning property owners will not be eligible to tie on to the new sewer line as the sewer service is outside the city limits. It will be necessary to cross four properties for the sewer line. Arrangements for sewer have been resolved with two of the four property owners, but due to mortgage holders on some of the properties and the lack of any resolution with the other two property owners, it is necessary to acquire easements needed for the sewer line by eminent domain. Motion to approve and authorize Board Attorney Jeff Reed and Trey Lee, Assistant Superintendent for Engineering and Construction, to follow any actions necessary to acquire sewer easements needed to extend sewer to the Tan Oaks site, and for the same, to be funded from the construction budget of the Tan Oaks site. Mr. Lee, is there anything you want to add to that?
Mr. Reed's office is handling this. The one property owner that has a mortgage, we have reached an agreement with this property owner. We have a signed agreement. But the mortgage company typically, and Mr. Reed can speak to this better than I, they have a tendency not to return certified letters and things, but they're a little more responsive to court orders. And we've explained all of this to the property owners, and they understand it. We actually have an agreement to go ahead and start our work on their property if necessary. Third property owner we're working with, and the fourth, we have not heard anything back. Mr. Reed's office has sent out numerous registered letters.
All right. Motion to approve and authorize the board, Attorney Jeff Reed and Trey Lee, Assistant Superintendent Engineering and Construction, to follow any actions necessary to acquire the sewer easements needed to extend sewer to the Tan Oaks site, and for the same, to be funded from the construction budget of Tan Oaks site.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. For Mr. Lee, can you explain the eminent domain process? What are we actually taking? What are we asking for?
Yeah. The school board has not had to condemn property for many years. It's been, I'm trying to think back since we've done it last. It's been 15, 20 years or more. But the Boards of Education, like most governmental entities and most utilities, are vested with authority for eminent domain, which means if there's a governmental purpose that needs to be met, the government is allowed to use a portion of a person's property for that purpose, but the government must compensate that landowner for that use. In this case, with respect to these sewer lines that are going to serve the school site, it's a small private sewer line. It'll be a tight line, as described, because it only serves the school system. It'll be a five-inch sewer line serving the school system. So it's a relatively small sewer line. There'll be a 20-foot wide easement obtained for the sewer line, and then two temporary 10-foot construction easements on either side of the 20-foot easement. So the 20-foot easement would be a permanent easement to So the twenty-foot easement would be a permanent easement to allow the sewer line to be in the ground, underneath the ground, and to run across the person's property to the school site. That will allow the school to have sewer on the school site. So the landowners will be entitled compensation for the value of that easement. To determine what the value, what compensation they're due, they're due, we will obtain appraisals. So we'll get certified appraisals done of the property. That amount, whatever our appraisal shows that the person is entitled to for the compensation for the fair value of their land, the use of the easement, will be tendered to the court when you file your eminent domain action. The landowner has a right to either accept that or contest it. So if they think the easement is worth more than what you, the appraisal has come back for, they can contest it in court through a court proceeding. They often usually get their own appraisals done, and then you can compare the two and either work out the difference, or you have a hearing, and the court decides what the ultimate value of the easement will be. So there's a really, really regulated and set agenda before the court that, a process that these go through. So that will be the process through which we go through. To hit on Mr. Trey Lee's point, even though we may have, at times have agreements with owners, it's very common that an owner will say, sure, we'll grant you the easement, we're okay with the, with the amount of money you're offering, and more often than not, that's really what happens. You, of the ones that you get into this, you have very few that end up being contested. But oftentimes, the landowners, even though they may be agreeable to it, they have loans on their property and mortgages on their property. And when you're dealing with mortgage holders, which are these big institutional outfits, like Wells Fargo, NewRes, place like, places like that, you can call these one eight hundred numbers and get someone on the phone, but to get anyone that has authority to agree to the easement is very difficult. And they'll say they're routing you to the right person to get an answer to you, but the typical, you rarely, with respect to the national lenders, do you get a response on the front end to get it worked out. If you have a local lender, if you got local, like Pendleton Bank, or you have Franklin Centrity Bank, or First Bank, or local lenders, sometimes you can get the, these worked out where the lenders will say, okay, we'll sign off on the easement, and that's fine. But usually, with the national lenders, you can't get that. So like in the instance with one person here, we need to go ahead and proceed with the condemnation and the eminent domain, even though we have an agreement with the landowner, to be able to adjudicate the interest of the mortgage holder. Because a mortgage holder is owed money in regards to the property, and they, at times, mortgage holders will want a portion of the money that has been paid in the court for the easement applied to the loan. Ultimately, the landowner will get full compensation, the full value of whatever's paid, but if you have a lender, at times lenders will want a portion of the property, of the money to be paid to them to pay down the loan. Other times, they may not even care, and they say, you, landowner, you keep all the money. Sometimes, mortgage lenders, in rare cases, will say, we want all the money paid down the loan, to be paid on the loan. In that case, the landowner still gets full credit for the money being paid, but the money's applied on their mortgage as opposed to getting in hand, cash in hand. So along with the eminent domain process as well, obviously, you're working, doing work on property that you don't own, that is on other people's property. So the other thing, which we always make sure we do in these situations, is we want to make sure we, if there are any fences that have to be cut, any soils disturbed, grass areas disturbed, that we repair those and restore those, to put those at least as good condition as they were before we did the work on them, and oftentimes better than what they were before they did the work on them. So after the work has concluded, if anything, any digging has occurred in the property, that will be leveled, will be seeded and strawed, fences will be repaired, oftentimes old fences are replaced with new fences. So if there's a new gate has to get installed, sometimes that's put in, but an effort is made to leave the property, property condition in a better condition than it was when we did the work, because we understand we're on there for someone else's property getting these line installed for whatever purposes, a road or sewer or whatever. But that's kind of the process to go through with it. So in this case, with, with Ten Oaks, we do have at least four properties we're going to have to cross, and we do have things, deals worked out with two of the four property owners, but even, like I said, with one of the two, we'll have to do an eminent domain proceeding because of the mortgage lender on that. So that's a synopsis of how that process works.
We had a guest speak about one of the property owners declaring, and they couldn't be here this evening, that they have not been properly notified. Can you speak to that?
Uh, we've sent notices out to all the landowners, and we actually, the same notices went out to everyone, we heard from three of the four landowners. There's one we had never heard from, so I don't know the explanation of why we had not heard from him, but I actually know that fourth landowner did call my office this afternoon, because I saw there was a message from them this afternoon. So we'll reach, we'll certainly reach out to that person again and, and talk to them about what the school system's looking to do on the property and try to work out an agreement with them. Certainly, we'd want to try to work with the neighbors out there and be a good neighbor out there in the area. We don't want to do anything to hurt anyone, we don't want to do anything to negatively affect anyone's property. We think the school site out there is going, obviously, we do think that's going to improve property values for everyone out there in the area. But in the end, we want to be a good neighbor to all of the adjoining property owners out there and do what's right with them, and do everything we can to accommodate any concerns they have with respect to any work going on out there.
I have a question. And I'm not sure who can answer this. It could be either Mr. Reed or Mr. Lee. Do either of you foresee us taking any more than an acre? I mean, are we looking at a quarter of an acre, an eighteenth of an acre? And I'm not, I'm not going to try to hold you to this, I know you don't know, but just for some kind of reference for us and, and the general public, I mean, are we taking an acre?
Well, there be no, there's no homes taken, there's no buildings being taken. The routing for the sewer will as close as possible be along the creek line that runs, which is kind of the lowest point usually on someone's property, and it's usually areas you cannot build in anyway because it's within a creek area. So it is designed that way to have a minimal impact as much as possible on someone's property. These will be twenty-foot wide easements, so I can't, I can't tell you the exact acreage to be taken, but it's not a huge amount of acreage that will be taken, but it'll be a twenty-foot wide easement, I can tell you that for sure, is what they need for the, for the sewer.
And is it pretty much common practice that if we paid eighteen thousand dollars for, an acre for that property, that those homeowners, if they have an acre, if we take an acre from them, that, I mean, how do they judge that?
Uh, well, it's based on appraisals. So appraiser comes in as a professional person who's used to judging and what value property is, and it'll be based on what, they look at comps in the area, they look at where, there's a lot of factors that weigh into it. If, if you put a sewer easement in an area that's a wetland area that can't be built on, that property may not be as valuable as something up close to the road, which can be a house site, so that weighs into it. If you're running a sewer line and affects someone's step system areas or drip field areas for the septic tank, that weighs into it. So if someone's fences have to be cut, trees have to be cut, if you have a great nice magnolia, for instance, that had to be cut, those landowners will be entitled to compensation for that. And if you just, you know, if there's a bunch of cedars that had to be cut, it's probably going to be less than, than landscaped trees. So all those factors, there's a multitude of factors that weigh into it in the appraisal process. So that's why you go to a third-party professional appraiser who does nothing but this, and to adjudicate what he believes to be, or she believes to be a fair value of the property. And then, to the extent a landowner does not agree with that, they will have every right in the world to get their own appraisal done, or contest it, or try to get something worked out with, as a, as a school board, as their own, or try to work out things with people. If they've had recent appraisals done on their property when they got a loan, sometimes we'll look at those and see if that, how that compares with your new appraisal. But that will all be taken into account in determining the fair value. We want to make sure people do receive a fair value for their, for the easement you're getting.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, and I may be wrong, Ms. Sharp, but I think we may kind of be talking about two separate things, and, and I don't know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think Ms. Sharp might have been asking specifically about Mr. Harris's concerns about his property and its value, and if I'm not mistaken, what we're talking about here with the sewer easement, they're really two different things, right?
Yeah, these, this, Mr. Harris's issue is with the road easement. So he, yeah, because there's some road area that has to be.
We would actually have to take some property, but in this case, I mean, yes, we do have to have access through their property, but we're not actually taking the property, and we're doing everything we can to restore it as best we can.
Yeah.
After that sewer line goes through, correct?
Correct. We will be burying a sewer line in the ground, and that'll be different than Mr. Harris's situation where he will have a road placed on top of a portion of his property.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Reed, just to clarify, though, that easement, those property owners can't build or do anything on top of it?
True.
So although it stays with them, it's still not, they can't build on it, it's not.
They can't build a house, so they wouldn't be, be able to build a house on it. If they wanted to grow a crop across it, that might be okay, they certainly can mow it and have, and have a lawn across it and run across it and play on it and things like that. People could probably garden on top of it and be okay, because it'll be in, deep enough that it would not interfere with the sewer line.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, do I have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Estes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number four.
All right, number four, how many easements are we talking about here? Mr. Lee, number four.
Ten Oaks.
Buchanan.
Five.
Five. All right, in order to provide sewer service at Buchanan, it is necessary for the sewer to cross several parcels, we just heard five, of property. Under the city of Murfreesboro guidelines, the sewer service can only be extended for the use by schools. Adjoning property owners will not be eligible to tie on to the new sewer line as the sewer service is outside the city limits. Is it expected that there will be out-of-state mortgage holders on several of these properties? So even if agreements are reached with the owners, is, it will likely be necessary to acquire the easements by eminent domain. Motion to approve authorize the board attorney Jeff Reed and Trey Lee, Assistant Superintendent of Engineering and Construction, to file any actions necessary to acquire sewer easements needed to extend sewer to the Buchanan Elementary School site and for the same to be funded from the Buchanan Construction Project budget.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear about this. So are, is our vote going to give you the authority to pursue eminent domain if we can't reach negotiations with?
That is correct. It's exactly, I don't want to say exactly, it's very similar to Ten, the same motion you just made, two different projects.
Have these property owners already been?
We have not contacted anybody, we just got our drawings approved by TDEC. Now that we have them approved and we've got our easements, the information's been given to Mr. Reed's office, and they'll be sending out letters in the next few weeks. And we'll start the same process with them.
I, I would just ask if we do vote to approve this, that, and I expect you would already be coming back to us, that we would stay in the loop on, on the process, or at least if there's conflict with some, if we have to use eminent domain in the future.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What's the timeline on this, Mr. Lee? Yeah, mhm.
Well, we're ready to go, we're waiting on T-DOT to issue our permit to go under the Manchester Pike. We have to get to the Maples property, which is adjacent to the Whitworth Buchanan school site. So we've got approval from Murfreesboro Water and Sewer, we have approval from TDEC, we're waiting on T-DOT. Once T-DOT gives us that, I would expect us to put the project out for bid, hopefully by the first of the year, if not sooner. The reason being is our sewer system at Buchanan is failing rapidly, and we need to get this new sewer system online before our current permit runs out at the end of twenty twenty-one. So we're hoping to be able to have this out for bid and come back to you with a contractor for approval, probably in December, January, and start construction on this probably late January, early February.
Oh, it is Buchanan School. I know it's been there since the seventies.
Seventy-seven is the original school, and that's the original sewer plant?
Not the original school. Original school was way.
Well, I mean, that building was constructed in seventy-seven, it's been added on to, that's what I was referring to. So seventy-seven.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Ms. Moore? Ms. Maxwell, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, number fourteen.
All right, number fourteen is the discussion of the director's evaluation. The board shall evaluate performance with the director at least annually. Any instrument to be used by the board in evaluating the performance of the director shall be developed by the board and the director, and shall be adopted by the board at least ninety days prior to their performance. The evaluation shall consist of specific and measurable criteria. I will say that I was remiss in not catching this the first time I was evaluated, which was in May of twenty nineteen. So we're still in the calendar year to get the, the next evaluation done. I am agreeable, looking at the, the instrument that was used prior, the previous year, I'm agreeable to using that for the twenty twenty evaluation, with one caveat, each board member signs their signature to it. I sign my signature to every evaluation that I do, so I don't think that would be asking too much. I do look for feedback of improvement. I want to give you a little history. I'm in my thirty-third year in Rutherford County consecutive employment. All right, I've done twenty years in leadership, so I think I'm more than capable of leading the school system. I surround myself with very effective people. I was stated in the paper saying that had we had accountability this past year, I believe it would be because of the expertise that I'm surrounded with. A number does not quantify me as an educator, it doesn't reflect me as an educator, that's just a, a number that can be very subjective, unfortunately. What my purpose is, is to make better opportunities for students. I'm not one to, you know, beat my own chest. I say that had we tested last year, I think our teachers had done such a great job that that would, that we would have seen a lot of, of great things happen. Unfortunately, it did not happen, but we're no different than anyone else. I say all that is because, to me, this should be a reflection on what has been accomplished here with these people that I've surrounded me with. We are, we opened our first virtual school. We rezoned, a massive rezoning went, you know, we had our little problems, but it went about as perfect as you can get with the help of some good people. We have saved money, we've talked about that, we've saved money. Then we get into the retention of our personnel, ninety-one percent retention of our teachers. Guys, people are going to leave, they're going to resign, they're going to retire, they're going to look for better opportunities. It's, it's a fact of life, it's called industry. A lot of people change jobs every six weeks, either on their own doing or someone changing it for them. I'm here to stay, I'm invested, I've been in this community since nineteen seventy-seven, Mr. Reed's been in here, in his fantasy since the turn of the century. I can understand that, but I guarantee you, I'm invested in Rutherford County schools, and I have no problem with any evaluation, because anything that an evaluation says positive is a reflection on the people that I have the opportunity to work with. So at this time, I would waive the ninety days, waive the ability for me to, to take part in creating this instrument and use this one here for the previous year. Going forward, you know, I got this, this is, this is embarrassing. This is a, a, a personal attack for someone who's been in leadership for twenty years, and I want, someone wants to send me and get trained on leadership? I'm sorry, but if I, and I'm almost sixty-one, if I don't have that damn pad right now, we might as well just break off right now. My point being is, I'm ready for this at any time for this previous year, and working going forward and getting the other one in on, on a time limit that's, that's appropriate.
Mr. Young, if I may, while we're discussing this, would it be appropriate out of respect for Mr. Spurlock, for him to leave the room while we discuss this? Isn't that what they usually do?
It's contract.
No, we have to work with the director on setting these goals and evaluations.
I think there needs to be some more discussion before we finalize what we're actually going to do.
And let me clarify something here, too, because it really don't spell it out here. This evaluation is for the twenty nineteen, twenty school year. This evaluation is for the 2019-20 school year.
Right, we're behind.
We're behind on.
Yes.
Okay, so we have to really come up with something quick here to make this happen. If we're going to change something, we have to give ninety-day notice. We don't have ninety days. So we need to go ahead and get through this process as best we can, and we can focus on the 2020-21 school year.
If we're already late, what's the rush?
Pardon?
If we're already late, what's the rush? Well, I mean, wouldn't we want to do it? Would, I understand we have to do, we're not breaking the contract, right? Because we're bound by contract.
Well, I think there is some stipulations in the contract as far as the timeframe.
Ninety days. We have to agree on it, ninety days before he's actually reviewed.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and Mr. Reed, if you would help us with this. I had an opportunity to talk to TSBA, legal, as well as Mr. Reed. Are we not required by law to annually, although the contract is written loosely, are we not required by law to annually give the Director an evaluation?
Yes, we're supposed to do an annual evaluation, correct.
Last evaluation was May of 2019.
Yes.
So we have to get this done within this calendar year, and his contract actually, Ms. Sharp, I'm not sure if you have a copy of it, but?
I do, and we're actually already out of the calendar year because it should have been last school year, not this school year.
Actually, it was, there's a difference between fiscal and calendar, so we are in the calendar year. It would end December 31st, so we're still well within the ambiguity of the contract.
Mr. Reed, if you would like to pass those out. Our teachers aren't rushed through their evaluation. We give teachers evaluations every year, and even with COVID, I'm assuming that they receive their evaluations. To be fair to Mr. Spurlock, why are we going to rush through this? And if I'm not mistaken, there was an email from Mr. Spurlock, I'd have to go back and look for it, where he said we interviewed, we reviewed him incorrectly when we first started talking about his review process.
You hear is, this is my contract. I can, and I can be amenable to anything. Am I correct?
Correct, the contract can be amended, so to the extent that you're willing to amend it and the Board of Education is willing to amend it, it can be amended.
So are we breaking the contract? We're not making our contractual obligation?
We would be breaking our contract if you did not evaluate me in the calendar year.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's an issue of breaking the contract is what you, the Board and the Director are agreeable to because it does, it's the way this thing reads. It says that the Board and the Director shall be, shall work together to put together criteria and an instrument to do the evaluation. And ultimately, it's the Board's decision to adopt it, so, but it does contemplate input by the Director of Schools.
And I have done the last year, and I know I don't have any this year, but at least this year I have had a copy to look over prior to.
Unfortunately, though, we did not until tonight. And if I may, take the floor, Mr. Chairman, for just a moment. I expressed in an email, and the rest of the Board may not be aware of this, because again, out of respect for the sunshine law, Mr. Chairman, I sent you an email, probably been over a month ago now, expressing concern that we had not yet done the Director's evaluation, which typically should have been back in May or June because the first one was done in May of 2019. And I also shared with you in that email and a couple of subsequent emails that I felt like the Board, and it very specifically says in the contract, "Any instrument to be used by the Board in evaluating the performance of the Director shall be developed by the Board and Director and shall be adopted at least ninety days, et cetera, et cetera." So my point in that email to you and my suggestion was that maybe it was time to take a look at how we do this whole process and that the Board should be more involved in developing that instrument. And unfortunately, I never heard anything back from you on that. So I went ahead and puts together some thoughts on some things that I thought should be a part of the evaluation, and I sent those over to Central Office here this afternoon with the request that they be distributed to the Board members, and unfortunately, that didn't happen. So I did take the liberty to distribute them myself. But I also see now that we also have in our materials a memo from Ms. Hopkins, and thank you, Ms. Hopkins, says, "Board members, the Director's School's annual evaluation is due." Well, again, it was due back in May. Enclosed are the performance goals and objectives along with the evaluation instrument. So this is the first, I've seen it. So the Board didn't develop these, and we haven't discussed them. And I'm going to go back to my original point that we should have had a separate Board meeting to dive into these and to make sure that we were developing an instrument that we all felt was appropriate for this evaluation. It's just simply the right and the professional thing to do. So the fact that we're getting this now and saying the forms due back to me in November and the Director's saying, okay, well, I'll waive the ninety days, this is all not acceptable to me at all.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I happen to agree with Ms. Sharp on a few, or Ms. Moore, excuse me, on a few points. The contract, Mr. Spurlock's contract actually says that he's to be evaluated at least annually. It does not specify calendar or fiscal, which I took up with Mr. Reed as well as TSBA to determine whether we needed to clean that language up so that we had a better timeline. Also, at the direction of TSBA, multiple conversations, which is the Tennessee School Board Association, and we are members of, and many of our policies are derived from what they provide for us, they have equated us re-drawing an evaluation instrument at this point would be essentially like changing the rules of a game after the game has finished. In order to properly evaluate Mr. Spurlock or any Director, we would need to have done this process before the evaluation period that we were going to be evaluating. So at the direction of TSBA, they have suggested we utilize the instrument that was used in the past and for the public's information. That instrument was derived, was developed in 2014, so since, we've been using that same instrument. TSBA helped us. They do tabulate it, but they did help us. And so we've been using the same instrument. In fact, I think Ms. Hopkins has gone back in the record and has never found in the past or in the most recent past where the Board has approved an instrument. So I would argue that this Board, not maliciously, I'm certain of, has not actually exercised their responsibility fully and appropriately. So to do this right now would be highly inappropriate, and it would be unfair to the system and the Director. So having said that, we are having a retreat. It is on the calendar. One of the requests of TSBA is that we would develop an instrument working with the Director during this period so that he has good, clear guidelines and a strategic plan so that we can unify the Board and move forward. We should have done this. This has, this should have already been completed, probably June, July, but unfortunately, with COVID and everything else we've been dealing with, I'd like to think that's why this has been kicked down the road some. But this is not the hour for us to be re-drawing up an evaluation. I don't think anybody who was going to be evaluated by an instrument that they did not get to review before they were going to be evaluated by it, nobody would have seen that. So I think we need to move forward with the recommendation of Mr. Spurlock that the evaluation tool, which is on our desk today, be utilized and submitted to TSBA for tabulation.
Ms. Johnson, with all due respect, I do disagree with you. Another concern of mine is, in the past, if we're going to go based on what we did in the past and we're going to use the same instrument, the process has always been in the past, at least for the six years that I've been on the Board, that we had the TSBA conduct the evaluation. I think it's highly inappropriate that we use this instrument and tool and it gets returned to the Director of School's secretary for compilation. So you'll see, if you look at the memo that I sent out, one of my recommendations was, and I'll read you, "The evaluation should be administered, compiled, and reported on by an independent impartial agency or organization, i.e. the TSBA or some other professional organization with the experience and credentials to carry out a process." Never in the corporate world would we have conducted some kind of a performance evaluation on a management-level employee and had that employee's secretary be the one that compiled it. This is nothing, please, Ms. Hopkins. I understand you're just doing as you're asked. So I think that's very inconsistent if we're going to say that we're going to continue with the same process that we have in the past, at least for this year.
One of the things I would call out, Mr. Moore, Ms. Moore, is that you might have wanted to read my contract. That contract supersedes anything the TSBA or anything that they would say, that's signed contract, that says that I will work with the Board, help create an instrument that is measurable. Okay, so TSBA, I mean, this was produced or created by TSBA. Am I not wrong on that?
I believe so.
And I think I've stated that for this, once again, for this time, that I would, you know, I would be willing to use this instrument.
So, and again, not necessarily speaking of the instrument, but the process in which it's processed after the evaluation is done. I appreciate the fact, Mr. Director, that you're willing to waive the ninety days, but I don't think anybody on this Board has been consulted as if we want to, and?
That's fine.
We're already so far behind the eight ball here, so to speak. And again, I don't want to cast any blame, but obviously, ball dropped tremendously that nobody brought up the fact that we should have done this back in the summer, and maybe Mr. Reed can speak to this legally. At this point, what difference will a couple or few more months make? And also, I'd like your legal opinion, Mr. Reed, on the compilation of the evaluation and who ought to be responsible for doing it.
Well, I think, and I don't have, I don't know what Director's opinion is on that. I think if you went to the TSBA and you wanted to use the prior criteria, the instrument that we used before has been suggested by Mr. Spurlock, and had, and asked that TSBA tabulate those, I would think TSBA will be willing and glad to do it. So I do think TSBA will be happy to help the Board do that. So if the Board wanted to send this, the results of this to the TSBA versus to the, versus Director of Schools' office, I think TSBA will be willing to do that and process it as they, I think they've done that before at times.
It needs to be one of three things. It either needs to be the TSBA or another independent organization or the Board itself. The Director reports to the Board, so you don't send someone's evaluation to their office to be tabulated. The responsible management team tabulates the results or an independent agent.
Reed, let me interject here, what Ms. Moore's using. I never saw the instrument last year. I never saw the scores until Mr. Bennett from TSBA come forward and went over the evaluation. So to say that, I don't, I didn't even know it ever went to the Board. I thought that was something that TSBA received and scored and submitted it back to us.
So if there's, so perhaps the easy thing to do in that is have, decide what the instrument's going to be, and we can request that be sent to TS, all the Board members send that to TSBA, and for TSBA to tabulate those scores, and then a representative from TSBA to come back to the Board and give a result of the totals of that compilation. That's what's happened before in previous years.
And if we're going to be so insistent that we use the same instrument, then the same process should be followed, too.
The one thing that does concern me is that we have two Board members that has been on board since September. I would be more than willing to meet with you guys, to go over anything that is pertinent to this, instead of, you know, instead of just guessing at it. I think that would be fair to me.
Mr. Spurlock, when I came on board in August, we did your review shortly after that. I think we're all educated. Ms. Brighton has worked for you before, has even worked here in the Central Office.
You came on board in August, and we did it in May.
Right, so it was a short, it was a short time. So let me, let me ask this. Did you review your principals this year?
I did.
Do you review them every school year versus calendar year?
Sure did.
And they, they review their teachers every school year?
That's right.
And they review their staff?
That's correct.
So then why would we not do the same for you?
Well, I'm not saying you didn't, but what I'm saying is, you're using this about the timeframe. I'm saying that they have not, I don't go in and evaluate someone not knowing a background and observing them and getting to know the instrument and making sure that what I'm looking for aligns with the instrument.
You're looking at two college-educated women.
That has nothing to do with the?
Well, you're saying that they can't, they can't figure out, they can't figure out the instrument.
Let me finish. It has to do that they don't know what my part of this, this instrument, what part that I have done with the help of my staff that aligns with that, that evaluation. That's what I'm saying.
It's insulting, it's insulting what this is.
Well, that's, you're taking it that way, not, it was not my intention.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to clear up a few things. I think there's quite a bit of confusion here. Ms. Sharp, to the point, the evaluation should, should have been, and it's not the Director's responsibility to do his own evaluation. That's the duty of the Board per his contract. So if there's anybody to be putting under the gun here, it would be us because we've all been here except for Ms. Maxwell and Ms. Brighton. And furthermore?
I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Excuse me. An evaluation is to cover that time period in which he was employed by the Board, and they were not serving on the Board at that time. So I understand his point. It is not an insult, and that you took it that way is disturbing. They cannot evaluate what they didn't know, just like we're talking about the instrument we're using. It, we cannot change the instrument today. He would not have had anything to work towards. It's a footprint. It's a blueprint on which we're, we're to grow into. Look, I think this Board has in some ways weaponized this evaluation process as though it's a gotcha moment, and the reality is, the beneficiaries of this evaluation is our district. It's our students, and that's who should come first, our teachers and our students. And to Ms. Moore's point, the very person that you're saying we're turning this information into, Ms. Hopkins, is the very person you asked to photocopy and prepare for. So unfortunately, Ms. Joyce is no longer in the office, she's out. Ms. Hopkins has been covering for two and a half people, and, I mean, that's asking an awful lot. She is not only the Board Secretary currently, but you're right, she is Mr. Spurlock's Secretary, and I think this is a really simple solution. We can simply send these evaluations to TSBA for tabulation at no charge to the Board or the taxpayers. It's a very simple solution. It does not need to be turned into something that's, nothing nefarious is happening here, and the responsibility should fall back on the Board, not the Director.
Yeah, there is no reason to be pointing blame here unless you're going to point the finger at yourself. We're all responsible as Board members to make this happen.
I wasn't the Chairman.
Neither was I, but we're still have a responsibility to bring it up to the Chairman. If we see something that's not going on, that we're responsible for. So we can point the finger back at ourselves for not making this happen. Now, I'm willing to make a proposal here that we go ahead and accept what the Director has asked us to do with this evaluation, and let's get this evaluation behind us, and let's focus, if we want to make changes, we make them next year or this year on the 2020-21 evaluation.
Well, what about the email that came from Mr. Spurlock that said we reviewed him incorrectly? Those were his words.
He's willing to accept what we're offering to do here if we, if we follow the same process we followed since 2014.
And I don't think he said we, he did it incorrectly. I think what he said was that it was his error that he did not fully read his or understand or interpret his contract, which required or permitted the Board and the Director to create the evaluation instrument that he would be evaluated on in that year. So I think it's an interpretation situation more than anything, and all these are very valid points, which is why we've requested a retreat in the next three weeks, and this is one of the points that we're going to discuss, and we won't be in this situation next year.
Trust me, we will not be in this situation next year.
So, Mr. Reed, question for you then, given that, because this is on the agenda, really, it appears as a discussion item, not as a voting item. So if we're making a big decision like this, trying to be consistent with the Director's contract and of course, do the right thing, is this one of those where we just walk away from it with thinking we have a consensus, or how should this work?
The, I think, the, it's clearly on the agenda to create the Director's evaluation. If any Board member wants to take a motion, whatever it may be, in regards to proceeding with the Director's evaluation, the Board is within its discretion to do that tonight.
And I guess that's kind of my point, is it very clearly says, "Discussion on creating Director's evaluation," but it was given to us tonight. We did not create it.
I think any, any motion that Board member wants to make in regards to Director's evaluation is free game for anyone to make tonight. It's clearly an agenda item tonight. It's clearly an agenda item tonight.
Thank you.
I guess with that said, is there anyone willing to make a motion? Ms. Brighton?
I would like to move that we accept the evaluation instrument that already exists, that has been used for years. Go ahead and evaluate, Mr. Spurlock, and that we create a new instrument at our board retreat for the next year, for the following year.
Do I have a second?
I'd just like a point of clarification. Mr. Spurlock said he was willing to waive the 90-day requirement that's written in his contract with some contingencies. No amendments to the actual contract, but there was a contingency. Can you please tell us what that contingency is?
Yeah, the contingency is on the instrument at the back. And it was no different than anything. I mean, when you want feedback, it should be clear where it has board member's signature. I think every, it's standard operating procedure in every school system, you know, when, when you score someone, you sign off on.
I don't necessarily disagree with that, but it hasn't been standard operating procedure, at least for all the history that I've been on this board, even with Mr. Odom's. It was always done the same way. They were sent into TSBA, and the responses were tabulated anonymously. Is that not correct, Mr. Reed?
Yeah, they were anonymous before, yes.
And I know, of course, too, when we have, teachers are surveyed about their principals, their results go in anonymously. So do they not-
I don't think this is a survey. This is an evaluation instrument.
They're being asked to evaluate.
But this is not a survey. This is an evaluation instrument that measures the goals, should measure, align with the goals of the director and the Board of Education, and the progress made in achieving those goals in a set period of time. Just because we've always, you know, you know, we, we've never had a virtual school in Rutherford County until this year, you know? My point meaning, just because we always did that, that way, doesn't mean that we can't change. I find nothing wrong with, when I evaluate a principal or a teacher, and we sit down and we go over the evaluation together, at the end of the day, I'm signing it and they're signing.
Well, Mr. Spurlock, I actually think you helped me make my point, because that was my point, that we should, it shouldn't always be business as usual. And that's why I wanted to suggest, you could suggest to our chairman over a month ago, that the board needed to meet to look at this instrument and not necessarily conduct business as usual, so, but thank you.
Ms. Moore, we were meeting on this as quick as I could get the information together and schedule it for a meeting. We're meeting very scarcely right now, so.
Yes, we are, and that, that's kind of our point too, because I know even one of our new board members has suggested that we've been severely lacking because we're not having enough time together in the wake of all of these issues and things that are going on with our system, and in the county and in the country for that matter right now. But, and Mr. Chairman, I certainly respect the fact that you've been extremely busy and covered up with a lot of responsibilities, I know that. But again, my recommendation was, we need to get together to discuss it and plan for it, which is specifically what it says we're supposed to do in the contract. But what we're doing is, we're bringing it to the board and saying, here, this is what we're going to do, approve it. The rubber stamping thing, which is something that seems to have kind of gone on for years, so that needs to change.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm highly offended at the idea that this would be a rubber stamp. Ms. Moore, the season for you to suggest amending the evaluation instrument was almost a year ago. So to be bringing it up now, to change an instrument, again, like TSBA has stated to me, it would be like changing the rules of the game after the game ended. So your, your information you provided is valuable as we move forward into the next season, but to change an instrument that evaluates somebody's past performance, which is essentially a roadmap for them to succeed, there's a lot more confusion there than I think is appropriate. And I, for one, am not a rubber stamp person, never have been, never will be.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second, Mr. Estes. Ms. Hopkins, will you call? Roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Brighton? Ms. Sharp?
No.
Ms. Moore?
No.
Ms. Maxwell?
No.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
The only thing I would add to the board is, there needs to be some clarification where the tabulation will be sent. Are we sending this to TSBA? Is that what we have agreed to do?
I was unclear on that as well.
Okay.
I'll put a motion on the floor for that, move that, we, if we're going to use the same instrument, that we use the same method to tabulate and present the results, and that be through sending it through the, to the TSBA.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Ms. Hopkins, will you like to call? Roll again.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Brighton?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Motion passes. Did we do number 14 and 15 all in one there? No reason to-
15's a little bit different on that one. On number 15, you've got a strategic plan in front of you, 2019-22, which, by the way, is the first strategic plan we've had in a decade. We have some updates on, that we'll be sharing during the retreat on our, on some of these goals that we've mastered, and some of them that we'll be adding some additional ones on there to take those place. Once again, on my contract, it says, additionally, the board and the director shall agree upon relative priority among the various goals and objectives. The goals and objectives shall be reduced to writing and may be among the criteria by which the director is evaluating, hearing, and providing. Prior to the beginning of each school year, the board and the director will meet to establish board goals and objectives for the next succeeding school year. I would like to, for everyone, to take a look at our strategic plan from 2019 to 22, kind of look, look at some of the goals, and it's broken down by, you know, each department here. And like I said, some of these, we have already, we've already mastered, if you will. Some of them we're in the process, and some of them are, have juggled due to a building program or something of that nature. Look over that, and then on our meeting in November, I, prior to us getting into this, I will give you the areas in which we have already mastered and put some, replace that with something. Now, it may include continuation of the, of the goal, you know, strengthening our current PLC framework. I think we would all agree that something needs to take place every year. And that's, how that's quantified is through what, what does our scores, now, of course, you know, having this year, we will actually probably have some, but it will not be held accountable in terms of the teachers in the school district, in the schools. But this can quantify some of the things that, that aligns with these goals here. You know, you, it wouldn't be, obviously, it wouldn't be without reach to, for the board to actually adopt this. In fact, that's kind of what we need. We need to adopt our strategic plan. And in our strategic plan, it's not a one-year thing, it's, it's over time. And we come back and revise it and repair, and whatever we put into it, we bring it before the board, we go over it, we talk to the board, and see if this is something that they would like to include as their, in their goals.
Is there any discussion on this? No discussion, we'll move on. Number 16, insurance date.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. They did cancel our meeting today, but I did send out an email about our benefit enrollment deadline being noon on Monday, November the 2nd, so we'll have an update next month when the meetings resume.
Thank you, Dr. Estes. Number 17, director's update.
Yeah, a few things. As we've heard from the governor and the commissioner of education, they're requesting, they're going to request to the general assembly and work it out that way through, to hold harmless the accountability piece this year. That does not mean there will not be tests, and that does not, doesn't mean that those tests will be published. And one of the messages that we've been saying to our teachers and the principals is, continue to do what you are doing. Don't let up, you know, try to catch up, close the gaps that they say that we have, and we probably do. And we will work through that process. This year, even though we, we were waived, we did have a report card, but only with two items on there. One of them was ready to graduate, and one of them was graduation rate. I'm happy to say that we improved in both of those areas, although it wasn't, we weren't held accountable on that. The other thing, we've got about over 6,000 that came back after the fall break, back to traditional setting. We probably, this week have had, in the last week, have probably had some of the highest incidence of positive cases turn up. I think we can attribute a lot of that to the fall break, and in that incubation period that follows that, that issue. Lot of teachers are juggling a lot of things right now with kids coming in and going out due to either contact tracing and things of that nature. Now, we did talk a little bit about Dr. Sullivan, the instructional department, looking at some flex days. One of the things that was sent to me several times by several different people was what Williamson County was doing. And Williamson County, I think they were taking one Friday out of each month to do all distance learning and give the teachers a time to work on the next week or so. My concern with that is, you know, Williamson County is a little different from us in terms of our demographics. We do have some challenges in terms of parents being able to provide that amount of daycare while we're, you know, while we're doing our PD, if you will. And, but we did, we are looking at some compromises. We're looking at, perhaps maybe looking at a day in January that's, that's, that we can allow for a flex day prior to the beginning of the, of the third quarter, and we're looking at a day in March where we can do the same thing. And we'll, just as soon as, I've got some feedback from principals, I've got some feedback from the instructional department, and next thing is our teachers. They're, one of the things I will say, the teachers on October 13th, probably had a, one of the most, I would say, effective days of doing professional development throughout the county, because I couldn't get enough emails. I mean, they were coming in, talking about how much they appreciated that. And I know that's a conversation that has been going on, and we want to do things, we want to do things to help kids and our teachers, but we also have to be cognizant of our parents. The northern end of the county, you know, we have a lot of parents that work, obviously, we all, a lot of parents work, but it's, you know, it's a challenge. And when we, when we do that, we have to consider not only those parents, we have to consider the children, you know, because we are their source of food daily.
Mr. Chairman, I would also say, I would concur with what you're saying here. It sounds wonderful to have a Friday every month, but not only just elementary school age children, but the special ed CDC children cannot be left alone at home either, and that is a unique challenge for those parents. A snow day is, is, can drive them crazy, because they're like scrambling. So I agree, flex days of just maybe one day in January, one day in March, sounds a little bit, they've got time to prepare, and, but.
You know, you bring up a good point. In fact, I got, I got several emails, you know, of concern, and they were, you know, they were concerned, I mean, there was, you know, there may be some little harsh language, but I really understood where they're coming from, because not every, it's not equitable as it is in other counties. And, but I do think our teachers deserve and need that, but I just think that we can't go, you know, we can't go too far in with like every Friday or something like that.
Mr. Spurlock, refresh my memory, is this our fourth or fifth year that the legislators have held harmless, has written legislation?
Over the, let's see, in 2018-19, we did have accountability. 2017-18, we had accountability, somebody help me out, did we have?
Yeah, I think we missed it. 15-16 didn't have, this should be year number four, I believe, if you're right.
So this is the fourth year we've written legislation, okay, thank you.
Right, and I think the last time that we had that, it wasn't really held harmless. It was, it was holding the teacher harmless and nailed the district and the, and the schools.
Yeah, the last time it was, it's not held accountable, but it's published in your teacher evaluation, the number of evaluations you have was based on the score you had.
Right.
So it really still wasn't.
It was.
Oh, because they keep changing the standards. Mr. Spurlock, if you can, I've got an announcement that you will want to read that is privy for you.
Yeah, absolutely. I was waiting on that. I thought they would let me know first. Take a deep breath, I'm not going anywhere, okay? All right. We knew that she was named as one of the finalists for the supervisor of the year, but I'd like to announce that Dr. Kay Martin is the Tennessee State School Supervisor of the Year.
(audience applauds)
And while she's coming up, she was, she would have been in the board meeting, but she was literally doing the virtual presentation, trying to figure out all of that thing while this board meeting was going on. So congratulations, Dr. Martin.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm very honored to receive this award. I'm very humbled, but I do have to say, I'm very honored to represent Rutherford County in that award. I am a product of Rutherford County schools. I was born and raised here in Rutherford County. I've stayed here. There's no other place I want to be. And I truly believe that education is the foundation of all dreams, and I am an example of that. Because, because of teachers, coaches, administrators that I've had in my life, they believed in me when no one else did, and so I was able to achieve my dreams. They even helped me discover my dreams when I didn't even know, as a child, what I wanted to do. You know, I don't know any of us that really know what we want to do. Always knew that I wanted to be a teacher, but I had people that truly believed in me and encouraged me along the way, even some of you that are here tonight. And so I am honored that I now have that opportunity to do that every day, hopefully. That's my goal every day, that I give back to this great community and these schools and administrators and students that did so much for me. So thank you for this opportunity. (applause)
Thank you. Just another good example of the talent we have here in our central office and all through our Rutherford County school system. Number 18, Tennessee Legislative Network. Do we have anything, Ms. Brighton?
Well, I don't have any update, but I did want to ask Mr. Spurlock. You talked about what Governor Lee has proposed for us. The districts will still be held accountable. Is that correct?
His language was the teachers and schools. I never heard the term-
Well, I kept looking for something, and I have never heard that the districts might not be held-
I never heard of districts.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure on that. We need to know that we-
Yes, ma'am.
-the district will still be held accountable, so.
Thank you, Ms. Brighton. Number 19, federal relations. Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, just a couple things. We touched on it in our orientation, but the USDA has formally extended the seamless summer option through June 2020-21. That's a 20's there. So that's, Doug, that's going to help us, right, in our, our fund. And then the, the CDC has updated this school coronavirus testing protocol. I'll send those documents to Ms. Hopkins, and she can maybe distribute them to the rest of the board, but some of the things that they were talking-
Thank you. Just another good example of the talent we have here at our central office and all through our Rutherford County school system. Number 18, Tennessee Legislative Network. Do we have anything, Ms. Braden?
Well, I don't have any update, but I did want to ask Mr. Spurlock, you talked about what Governor Lee has proposed for us. The districts will still be held accountable. Is that correct?
His language was the teachers and schools. I never heard the term.
Well, I kept looking for something, and I have never heard that the districts might not.
I never heard of districts.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure on that. We need to know that we.
Yes, ma'am.
The district will still be held accountable, so.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Braden. Number 19, federal relations. Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, just a couple things. We touched on it in our orientation, but the USDA has formally extended the seamless summer option through June 2021. That's a 20's there. So, that's, Doug, that's going to help us, right, in our, our fund. And then, the CDC has updated this school coronavirus testing protocol. I'll send those documents to Ms. Hopkins, and she can maybe distribute them to the rest of the board. But some of the things that they were talking about in that, in the CDC guidance was not mandatory testing for coronavirus, not retesting. I found it to be interesting, so I'll forward that on. The other thing is, there's been some conversation, and we got an email from TSBA about them parting ways with NSBA. I talked to Ben Torres, have a call out to Tammy Grissom at TSBA, and we are going to part ways with them as of next summer, but that doesn't, isn't going to affect us. There's actually, they're creating a Southern Region advocacy group with some of the surrounding states. And so, Ben said stay tuned. They'll probably touch on that at our retreat coming up. But they, he says we'll probably be able to advocate a little bit more personally, and build those more personal relationships with our congressional delegation, as opposed to what we're doing right now. And there will be cost savings, because we currently attend NSBA functions. We won't have those registration fees, but they will, they will partner when they go to Washington DC. The replacement, the Southern Association, if you will, will go probably around the same time as NSBA. So, we're not losing anything. In fact, it probably will be an enhancement for us. So, we'll provide more information as it becomes available, but I'm hoping we'll talk about it at the retreat as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, general discussion.
If I may, Mr. Young, Saturday, we had the Old Timers Festival in Laverne, and Dr. Hatchett was the master of ceremonies, and it was a great turnout. It was a great day. The weather was phenomenal. I think they have recorded it, so you guys will be able to see it. Maybe we could, maybe Mr. Evans can feature some of that on some of our news communications, but it was great. The Hispanic community came out like nobody's business. There were floats. There were probably hundreds of horses and brass bands and everything. It was incredible. And I highly recommend everybody to try to go next year when we have it again.
Thank you. Dr. Hatchett is a great asset.
And also, let me say, a Friday night, Laverne and Smyrna, 7 o'clock, Smyrna.
I'm going to be there. Already got my ticket.
All right, any other general discussion?
Yeah, I apologize for this. I sent y'all a posed map for the rezoning of the Plain, now we can call it Plainview Elementary School. Mr. Morgan has worked this out. Next week, I want to say it's Wednesday, the principals of these respective schools will be coming in and working with Mr. Morgan, and looking at this, and seeing how this impacts them. And then, what we're proposing is to have a rezoning meeting on November the 12th at Rockville Elementary, with, and I might have to talk how, what that would look like as far as, I mean, I'm a, you know, I don't, this is a little uncharted territory with this COVID thing, but how, what we do there in order to get input from the parents and stuff like that. And then, on December the 3rd, we're proposing for a rezoning meeting at Barfield Elementary. And then, that would conclude our outing in the district, and then Mr. Young and I are looking at a date sometime in January, bring it back to the central office for the final meeting.
Mr. Spurlock, if you would maybe clarify, and I know that most of us probably know and understand who they are, but when you talk about meeting with the administrators of those schools, for the general public, maybe specify which of those.
Right.
Schools are possibly going to be impacted by this rezoning.
Correct. Rockville Elementary School will be Ms. Nichols. She'll be impacted by that. Ms. Judy Goodwin at Barfield Elementary School, she will be impacted. Mr. Chris LaFerty at Christiana Elementary School, he will be impacted. And Ms. Witt at Buchanan Elementary School, she will be impacted. At this time, we do not have a principal for Plainview that will be coming along in the second semester, and so unfortunately, that person will not have the ability to sit in on these. But we'll, we have some, these are very effective principals. You know, Rockville is way overcrowded. Barfield is one of the unique, what's occurred with Barfield is when they opened up Salem, because of that, because of that particular zone layout, it's really kind of grown out, and there's going to be some flux, you know, vacillation back and forth, but it's going to be pretty steady. Obviously, Plainview, one of the things I think that we're looking at, and try to do a better job, and I know this is, sometimes this is a problematic, when we talk to our commissioners, but we're going to try to leave some room for some growth at the elementary school. As well as I think that we did Rockville High School, if we had it to do over with again, I think we would probably would provide it a little bit more room for growth. It wasn't intentional, and we actually did work with the principals on that. But that's one of the things that we learned in that process, of that huge, this was a huge undertaking here. Not quite like Rockville High, but it's a huge undertaking. And I will add, Mr. Morgan has done a tremendous job with trying to identify areas in which we're, we're trying to keep from someone who goes to Plainview Elementary, and then has to go back to Christiana Middle, or wherever the case may be.
Mr. Spurlock, one more question. And so, it is our intent with this rezoning in the new school, that we're going to do our best to get rid of most, if not all, of our portables at Buchanan Elementary, correct? Some of them are pretty decrepit.
Yes, and I'm going to let Mr. Lee give you a total number. It's amazing.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
All four schools encompasses 34. And we're, based on the preliminary numbers that Shane's been looking at, we anticipate being able to at least get rid of all of them to start with.
Yeah. Very good news.
Any other discussion?
Chairman, could I be recognized for about 30 seconds, please?
Typically, we don't do that. Mr. Reed, is that an issue?
Visitors are allotted three minutes at the beginning of the meetings. So, that's what the visitor section is.
All right. If nothing else, we're adjourned.